Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we have everybody present either on Zoom or is Marcus on?
Nope.
Okay, it looks like Marcus dropped off, so I think he'll be hopping back in, in and out. He's having trouble getting on. Okay. Old business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of February third, two thousand and twenty-two were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February third, two thousand and twenty-two as presented.
Remove.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call or roll?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
There. Abstain.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Major?
Mr. Major's not on. We'll keep him off for now. Motion passed. Um, is there anybody in the audience? There isn't anybody in the audience but staff. Okay, so no need for a presentation. Um, new business ordinance number ten seventy-nine amend chapter ten, article one, section one oh four and one oh seven of the code of the city of Lansing, Kansas. The amendments include the municipal judge will be a contract position and regularly admitted practice law in the state of Kansas or certified by the Supreme Court in the manner prescribed by KSA twelve dash forty-one fourteen as qualified to serve as a municipal judge. The municipal judge will receive a monthly salary of fifteen hundred dollars. I need a motion to approve ordinance number ten seventy-nine.
Remove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Have we questioned anything?
Yeah. Evidently not. Call or roll?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Trinkle?
Yeah.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number three is appointment of municipal court judge. Gary Fuller has been practicing the law in Leavenworth County since nineteen eighty-nine and currently serves as Lansing's reserve public defender. This contract would be effective one March, two thousand and twenty-two. I need a motion to approve Mayor McNeil to appoint Gary Fuller as Lansing's municipal court judge.
Remove. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
I know Mr. Fuller joined us on Zoom, um, in case anyone has any questions, but we're excited for him to take over.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Fuller? No? Okay, call or roll?
Kirby?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you.
Construction and inspection services for K seven and Eisenhower project of the five firms con- contacted. Venice is able to meet the time and the staff commitments for this project. The city of Leavenworth staff was involved and incurred with the choosing of Venice. City of Leavenworth will be responsible for one-third of this cost. Need a motion to approve the proposal from Venice engineers in an amount not to exceed a hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Remove.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Like here. Anyone out there? Jesse, Greg? Okay.
Nope.
Call or roll?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
I, I forgot they asked a question. Can I back up a minute?
Sure.
Oh, I keep being asked, when is this, when are we gonna start seeing a mess? I guess is what everybody's asked, when they gonna start?
The Kansas Department of Transportation authorized us to release the bids. The bids are scheduled to be opened on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. And the schedule from the contractor will be reviewed upon a successful award of the bid. You should expect to see the bids in April and we'll have the schedule from the contractor then. Uh, they have some leeway when they could start. Uh, but we did give them twenty-five weeks to accomplish their work and their work. Their schedule will start when their first traffic control devices are in place.
I noticed that they showed pictures in the quarterly magazine. That's got everybody fired up.
Yes.
I, I just needed some bids. Everybody was asking me.
Uh, the date certain right now is March twenty-third is when the bid opening is scheduled to happen. And, um, we will present to the council in April.
Are, are they, one more thing, I'm sorry, Tony. Are they gonna, or what are they gonna do with shoebox thing? Is it, is it gonna, is it sold? Is it part of the plan or is it still there?
Uh, that, that's not part of the plan. I, I think there's people talking to them or it might even be perhaps under contract, but that doesn't have anything.
I noticed it, it went empty about the time all this started and it's still empty. I thought maybe it was in there.
Yeah, and, and they weren't even part of our land acquisition plan if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, right, Mike? We didn't have to acquire any. No, um, we intentionally, uh, held the east side of the, of that intersection s- stable so that we didn't have to, we did all the work on the west, so we minimized our land.
That answers both questions. I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Uh, item number five is executive session personnel matters. I, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception. KSA seventy-five, forty-three nineteen B one for fifteen minutes, beginning at seven oh seven and ending at seven twenty-two.
Remove.
Remove. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call or roll?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed. We are in executive session. All right, I need a motion to oh, I gotta wait for the, uh, recording to go back.
Oh, this, no, I'm gonna wait for real.
I make a motion that we return to open session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call or roll?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Clemmons?
Yes.
Brundart?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yeah.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
I think you're saying my name. Yes, I can barely hear you. And I got my speakers turned up all the way. I can't hear when she's calling.
I, I moved the mic for the executive session. Sorry about that.
Report, city attorney. You got anything?
Another report, mayor.
All right, thank you. Tim, city administrator.
So the State Department of Commerce has a brand-new grant program called the Base Grant that stands for building a stronger economy. Um, I think a lot of it is leftover COVID money. Uh, so we just found out about it a couple of weeks ago and the deadline is February twenty-eighth. Uh, the rules of the grant are pretty liberal as far as what you can apply for, as long as it's something that has a positive economic impact. Uh, we've spoken with the, uh, county a little bit about doing a joint project to fund sewer construction to McIntyre Road. Uh, so originally we were just doing the design and we were going to do construction as, uh, as development commences. Um, but if there's the possibility to get three million dollars from the state, um, I think it'd be a good idea for us to apply for that grant. Um, as we were in the online workshop, the state talked about how multi-jurisdictional applications, uh, are looked upon favorably. You know, if we're able to apply with another government entity, that makes our application look better. Um, but, uh, the grant is at the most seventy-five percent. Uh, so even if we do get something like this, uh, we'd still be potentially paying around a million dollars. So I didn't want to, uh, to receive the grant and then have you guys say, oh, we have to pay a million dollars. We never mentioned it to us, so. I did want to get your guys' feedback on that, make sure you guys are okay doing a joint grant application with Leavenworth County for sewer construction to McIntyre Road. Um, one other thing I wanted feedback from you all on. Another thing the state mentioned in their webinar is that grant applications that ask for a little bit less than the maximum amount might also be looked at unfavorably. That helps the state stretch their grant dollars a little bit more. Um, so when I was, uh, just doing rough numbers, um, based on a sixty-five percent grant, so if it acts out seventy-five and if we applied for sixty-five, um, our grant would be for around two point nine million dollars and our contribution would be about a million dollars. And then Leavenworth County has verbally said they'd chip in five hundred. Um, but so those are, those are the things that I wanted to make sure you guys are okay with. And then if you guys are okay with that, uh, the county will have a contract to us for next week. So we would have a brief special meeting right before the work session.
Hey, Tim, I, I read your note and, uh, yeah, I, if you think that dropping it down at sixty-five percent will help us get the just under three million bucks from the state, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Then how did you come up with that number? Just curious.
Sixty-five?
Yeah. It just sounded good.
Seventy-five was the max and I figured, you know, sixty-five, I guess, shows, we have a little more skin in the game, but I mean, I didn't have a formula or anything. But at sixty-five, our, our contribution's a little over a million.
At sixty-five, it's probably about the max we wanna actually put out from the
Yeah.
from the city as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
And that, that's the same percentage that the port authority discussed and recommended. And they also said if we could put a, a letter of endorsement from the city with it, that would even boost the pack even more.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, we can talk about another letter of support for.
Yeah, I already signed about seven hundred of those, it seems like.
We've given you a lot of things to sign.
All right, it wasn't seven hundred. I think it's like five. So, yeah, we've already done a few letters of support.
Sounds good. Okay. Now, my only question is where would that take sewer? Would that take it all the way to McIntyre or just to the north corner?
Um, no, it would take it all the way through that property.
Like, like it was originally?
I think almost all the way to the road, McIntyre. I don't think it, I don't think this would pay for going under McIntyre, but it would take it all the way almost to the road. Makes that property a lot more developed.
I don't know if you guys remember the design that we had drawn out.
Yeah, all the houses on the far side or on the other side of McIntyre.
Right, but you can run a, another line.
East.
Right, and then connect it that way too.
Good, I, but, but so this wouldn't, uh, this wouldn't hook up those six or seven homes on the, uh, on the south side and then even then though, you know, that's one of those things you'd have to kind of do a cost benefit analysis, like if, if a lateral line on the south side of the road costs us, pick a number, sixty thousand dollars, would we get that back from six or seven homes over the course of however many years? I, I don't know.
It just depends also what develops there. Cause if something develops there and they put a lateral line in.
How, how far, how far is that from school line that they put through? Am I, am I in the right area there? Or that's further, further north?
So this is on K seven and McIntyre. So right now, the, yeah, K seven and.
Cause I know we've talked about it over there too. I was trying to hit which end of Mac.
Oh, yeah. Yep. So you guys are all generally okay with that?
Yeah, run, run with it.
Okay. And, and one other thing that I'll mention to you guys, and then I know Matt has something to bring up too. Um, the library's been, uh, kind of, uh, being painted and the carpet's being replaced. It looks really fantastic. Uh, be sure to check it out. Uh, we should hopefully be open next week, but, uh, Harry's done a really good job over there. I know she's been really busy with it lately. But, uh, be sure to check out that library next week. Um, and then with that, Matt is, or if you wanted to bring up something.
We can't hear him.
Lou. Can't hear.
The mic doesn't work.
Batteries are dead. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can't, if it stops at any point, just let me know. Um, wanted to talk to you guys about the Fourth of July festival that we normally have at Bernard Park. Uh, I know Bernard Park's gonna be under construction in that timeframe. And, uh, so we were kind of looking at other options, other places where we might be able to do that event. Um, we could do something at Town Center where it would be more similar to what we did in two thousand and twenty where it's more scaled back. It's just kind of fireworks. Might be able to do some food trucks or something like that, but it'd probably primarily would be those two activities. Um, the other thing we thought about was talking to the high school and seeing if we can do it at the high school in their parking lot. Um, I know in two thousand and nineteen, I think it was, we had Lansing Days out there. That seemed to work really well. We used the lower parking lot for all of the day's activities, the, the rides, the food vendors, the stage, all that stuff. Um, and I don't think we had fireworks at that event because of the weather during that. But, um, we could potentially look at seeing if we can, if the school will let us do fireworks out there. I think there's a fairly large hillside on the west side, sorry, south side of the trail that runs down there that we might be able to shoot from the top of that hillside. So need to look, we'd have to talk with the school district to see if they're on board or if they're willing to do that.
That's kind of, that's kind of funny because that's where the firework, the whole process started. When I was on the council, we started in, uh, along school.
Yeah.
Over the play baseball field and that's kind of was always got a kind of cushion to come back on, I guess.
Yeah.
If it worked for us.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just wanted to talk to the council and I, I, Tim wanted to talk to you guys as well before we reach out to the school district. We don't wanna, I don't wanna reach out to them if you guys aren't.
Council feels completely get away from it. We talked about it last year. It, how the COVID started getting better, that we wanted, we didn't want to lose what we've been worked on for so many years. I, I think the day if it's possible, I think we ought to try to see if we find maybe a smaller location. You know, might help, at least keep the, the thought there.
Sure.
That's fine.
Kind of like the Town Center. I mean, if you blocked off the Town Center, two lanes or one lane and put the, put the rides on one side and the trucks on the other and you can only walk through there and then did fireworks on top, I think that'd be pretty nice.
So my question. They'd have a parking problem, would you? That's.
What's that? Well, I mean, you could park at the school and walk across there, Jesse.
Yeah, true.
I mean, it's not that far.
Well, we could also run, there's the potential that we could run a, uh, a bus service between the high school and the elementary school or somewhere down there to, to bus people from the high school over similar to what we do when we have it at Bernard Park and we bus people in and out.
So you did it, we did it, we did it at Bernard Park.
Yeah.
For out in the county, so it wouldn't want to be closer to more hard surface. We could work off over here in Oakland.
The, the, the major difference between like the high school and Town Center is if we do it at the high school, the chances of having alcohol there, having a vendor who can sell alcohol is probably pretty slim. I don't think the high school's gonna let us have alcohol on the property. If we do it at Town Center, then that is a possibility. So, I mean, we can certainly look at doing it at Town Center. I do think.
Greg votes for alcohol. I think he's got his arm up.
Well, can you, can you have it, you, you say the alcohol would be a contributing factor? Did you have it, still have it at Town Center and have the alcohol and include the school? Or do you think the school would back out if we had alcohol involved the period with?
I don't think they, it almost seemed to be. Last year we had. Park. This.
My mic went dead again.
They just don't want it on their premises.
We'll see how many times I can turn it on. Sorry? That's, I was, I was kind of wondering if it is a state statute or state law that you can't do that. So. Yeah. One other thing, I guess, that I'll, I'll just throw out there too. When we did the fireworks at Town Center a couple of years ago, if you guys remember, I think we did that over Labor Day. So it got darker earlier, so we were able to light them off at eight thirty or so. You know, keep in mind by the time we light these ones off in the summer, we'd be lighting them off at nine forty-five or ten. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it, it'd be a little bit louder for people in the city limits a little bit later. Um, but, but just. Yeah.
Yeah, but you see how many people still come from Leavenworth and find our roads to park on everything would be, I mean, even though it was earlier late, we still had the crowd turned out because they were parking everywhere they could park to watch our, I mean, they come from everywhere to watch our fireworks. And I, I, you know, I
That's true.
It's probably a minor thing and I understand what you're saying. People complain about the bothers their dogs.
It'd just be a lot later. Some people might, you know, go to bed at nine and.
Yeah, but I mean, uh.
That's one day, one day you.
That's, yeah.
Just, I mean, it's, it's you know, it's a catch twenty-two. I mean, if you do it from the high school, you got all rock creepery. I mean, that's a pretty large chunk of our population too, so I mean, it's no, you're not gonna get away from.
We used to do it from the football field right up here.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see a problem with that. I don't see a problem with that. I mean, you can do them in our fields out, out here. That's something you overhear or whatever. You look about any, any field that we've had, we, we probably shot fireworks off of it out here at one time or another.
It's the only advantage that I see right now is at the high school, you got plenty of hard work. And that could be a huge deal, but can't plan on the weather.
Yeah, we, we get a wet, wet season again.
Microphone's off.
There. Uh, one of the things we learned last year was that if we're gonna bus people in and out as much as we did last year, we definitely need to have a circle drive so that those buses can pull in, load, unload, do what they need to do and then head right out. Um, that's one of the definite takeaways we learned from last year, you know, doing it at Bernard Park. We certainly, there's definitely some solid lessons there, so. But I think if we did it at the elementary school, we can facilitate that if we have a bus running between the high school and the elementary school, for example, to get people to Town Center.
But would it just reach out to the school district in the next there too and just tell them, you know, is it gonna be alcohol or whatever? And they may tell you just no, and then we can say, well, we've been down that road and it's not gonna work. You know? Okay, well, if there is, there is.
I mean, we're gonna have to coordinate to get the park in there anyway.
I'll just talk to him. That, that work better?
Nope.
I'm done.
Just give up, give up on that mic. Throw it across the room.
That's impersonal, Jesse.
You wanna go around the horn and just kind of give your preference?
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful. Like, uh, you know, either Town Center or the high school. I mean, uh, if we're gonna pick those two locations for now, just kind of give your thoughts and crush. Dan?
If, if it's legal and the school board allows it, high school. If not, Town Center. Town Center. Town Center with parking at the, at school, whatever majority, majority rule.
Agree with Dan.
You have to vote before you get a majority, Dan. Yeah. Okay, Jesse, did you have a preference?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a fan of Town Center and I'll, I'll tell you why. Because I think you will get a lot of traffic, people driving down Main Street and they go, oh, what's this going on? Let's go see what's going on here. So that's why I like the Town Center thing. Plus, we own the property, so we knew whoever went there.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jesse. Greg?
Town Center.
I think the majority is Town Center with.
Steve, is that gonna cause you problems having fireworks right there off the highway? Not before.
It does before.
It did before. It did two years ago or three years.
Any home property? Whoever you run the cable on the highway.
Okay, Matt, is that, you, you got enough info? Okay, thanks.
Well, you're not gonna ask me, Tony? I, I don't feel the love, man.
I'm sorry. What was that? Hey, Marcus, I didn't even know you're still on. My fault. There you are.
Oh, there you are.
Hey. Marcus, did you have a preference? I'm sorry.
So, so, so let me get this right. We're, we're gonna select between the Town Center and the high school. Um, I vote Bernard Park. No.
Okay, well, you've been outvoted. It's Town Center. Thank you very much.
Town, Towns. Town Center for sure. Uh.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Sorry about that too. Okay, uh, we'll go around the horn starting with Jesse.
Yeah, we had a pretty significant snow event today. Uh, I was curious, are our employees gonna be out all night long trying to clean up this mess?
That's a question for Mike.
This one looks on. Is this on? Uh, we've demobilized, we demobilized, um, at about six PM tonight. Uh, we were fortunate enough that the sun came out about three. So we extended a little bit just to kind of get some good cleanup and, and get effective use of the, the daylight and the, and the temperatures that we had. Uh, we are on standby though. If we do start getting some overnight things, uh, we are prepared to re-mobilize if needed.
Okay, thank you. I, we really appreciate everything that the employees do out there cleaning these streets off. I mean, it's, that was a lot of snow, you know, so they worked hard to get those, those streets cleaned, so we really appreciate that. So, that's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Greg?
Yeah, I want to say the same thing, Mike. Uh, you guys were up bright and early. Um, I heard them driving by. Holiday is clear. I, I appreciate it. They did a great job and they all wave again still, which makes me feel nice. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, Dan?
I know we got a lot of snow. My house is like eight foot and I know it's not gonna be easy and it's not gonna be perfect and I appreciate all the guys do.
And it, yeah, okay. Gary?
Mike, please tell your guys thank you. I know you got, you, you gotta be dead tired yourself. So, uh, Steve, thanks for your guys too, where you guys work. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Gary. Done.
Uh, yeah, good job on the streets as always. You left that pile in front of my driveway again like you have for the last thirty years. It's great. Love it.
We gotta get the money in an envelope to get.
Is that what it is? Uh, also, uh, the only other thing I got is I'd like to welcome Judge Fuller. And with that, uh, Dave, you can talk.
Thanks.
Hi, the boys done a wonderful job on the streets like normal. We usually get a lot of compliments about the, you know, when you leave the the boundary from one city to the next, so. That's something that's always been in our ballpark. I, I really think they did a good job again. Pass it on to Mike.
All right, Gene?
Yeah, I agree with everything's been said. I think the tricky part about this one, Mike, is the timing. I mean, this hit just essentially right, a little before rush hour and it was coming down at two inches a, an hour. So this, just based on that alone was not, if there is a typical snowstorm, uh, this was not it. So, cause you didn't have all night to get ready. It's like it, people are getting ready to go to work and, and then the snow comes down, it's a clip it did, so. Uh, but they always do a great job.
And it, Gene? And before I get to Marcus, uh, I will, you know, I mean, we're, I know we're throwing a lot of kudos out, but at the same time, I think part of the issue, and Gene kind of brought it up, is there's still work to do on the streets. Um, so there were a few complaints and I passed those on, but I, I do want to mention that's part of the issue is we just didn't have the time and the amount of snow that came down to actually get to everywhere, so. We're still working and they'll work it tomorrow. So, Marcus?
Hey, thanks. I appreciate it. So, yeah, everybody's highlighted street crews and, and Mike, I can't thank you enough. Um, I'll shoot you a note. Dead ends, dead ends and snow piled up in front of driveways gets to be kind of hazardous, but, um, but outside of that, it's been amazing and our first responders out there taking care of us. Chief Weyman, we support our officers and, and we support you. And the fact that your, your officers know that we stand behind them and we support them means an awful lot to them, so. that we stand behind them and we support them means an awful lot to them, so continue to give them, give them our support, let them know we stand behind them. And with that, mayor, I recommend that we adjourn.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, call or roll?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brundart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yeah, we'll get the envelope for the money for the snow that we put in front of Stenica's driveway before we leave.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion pass, we are.